...to go into executive session for matters related to attorney, related to attorney-client privileges, as well as matters related to personnel. Have a motion to that effect?
Motion.
Seconded by Kevin and made by Vinnie. All those in favor, by a show of hands? Any opposed? First of all, I just want to apologize for the length of time we kept you out here while Any abstentions? Okay, then I guess we'll stay right in this room here. we were in executive session. We were trying to understand some changes in the budget that was being presented to us, and we needed that time. So, we appreciate it, and please accept our apologies. At this point, we're going to go to the invocation, our moment of silence, and I'm going to do it today. This past weekend, we celebrated Memorial Day. Memorial Day, as you all know, used to be called Remembrance Day. It has been in existence since shortly after the Civil War. Its purpose has been, and still is, to remember those who have given their lives on the service of our country. Laurie Gates recently sent me the following quote from President Reagan's 1982 Memorial Day comments at Arlington National Cemetery, and I think they sum up the spirit of this important holiday. Speaking of our honored dead, he said, "As we honor their memory today, let us pledge that their lives, their sacrifices, their valor shall be justified and remembered for as long as God gives life to this nation. Let us also pledge to do our utmost to carry out what must have been their wish, that no other generation of young men and women will ever have to share their experiences and repeat their sacrifice. Please take a moment to reflect on and honor the sacrifice of our fallen veterans from all wars." Now the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Fire evacuation announcement? In case we have to evacuate this chamber, there are two exits. One immediately in front of me, to your rear, go down the stairs, out the double doors to the green. To my left, to your right, go through the double doors, take an immediate left, go through the double doors and down the stairs, out into the parking lot. Kathy, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Feely?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mrs. Suzak?
Here.
Mr. Serrard?
Here.
Ms. Hall?
Here.
Mrs. Rancourt?
Chairman Neville?
Here. My understanding is we have no board guests, Dr. Schuman?
That is correct.
Okay, item eight, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In the superintendent's report, the item A is the student representatives and alternatives. And the board is going to need to approve and appoint a new representatives, or new representatives, depending on how you interpret your policy. If you look at your policy, which is in your packet, lines forty-three and forty-four say the student representatives will serve for a period of one calendar year, and then need to be reappointed. This year, you had a junior and a senior, and I think it worked out well because you have different perspectives from different classes and different age groups. The question I'm asking of you, and the way I would like you to interpret your policy, is that your current junior be reappointed to come back as a senior, and then we look to appoint a junior for the next year to come back and serve. And so you would continue to move that cycle through, so you'd have some continuity in the workings of your student representatives. Again, this is totally up to you. I don't know how to interpret lines forty-three and forty-four, so before I can give you guidance, I'll need you to think about that, whether someone can be appointed to one-year terms, or whether it is your intent to have two brand-new people come before you.
Donna?
Is that still when we have the consolidated high school? We will have a seated junior and senior?
It would work out very nicely as we move down the road as well. And one would be there to give, you know, the seniority and guidance and experience to the next one coming on, how to work with the student body, how to get information to the board.
We usually get an envelope with the names.
Well, we haven't done that yet, because I don't know whether I should be bringing you back.
Oh, okay.
Two brand-new people, or one of our current representatives who would still be available to you next year.
All right, so what you're suggesting is that Fermi would have a senior, and Enfield High would bring us forth a junior?
That would be my recommendation to you, yes.
And the alternates? We've always had alternates.
We would have alternates as well.
Same class level?
I don't know if they're the same class level now. I don't believe they are. Perhaps you guys can help us.
Katie, maybe you don't-
Hi. We have a senior as an alternate as well.
Okay. And you have?
Emily's a senior.
Okay. I would respectfully ask you to go back to the principals and have them give us the allocation of senior and junior that we have now with appropriate alternates as well. That's the will of the board.
That's the will of the board, and if that's your-
Okay, and I would not have issue, any issue, if our current member stayed on for an additional year. But I'd leave that up to them and the principals to make that decision.
Do you agree with the policy?
Do you don't see a problem with that? That's what, yes?
The way that I'm understanding the policy-
It shall be one school year.
It shall be one school year, but I don't see a problem if the principals are reappointing the same person. I think it should be left up to the principals, and, I mean, that's already in our policy, so I think we're okay.
Thank you, Mr. Serrard. I was just looking for your interpretation of one school year, whether that meant one school year and done, or whether it could be multiple one-school-year appointments.
I'd be comfortable with either. I don't see any restriction there.
Thank you.
And I'd put it back to the principals to come up and make their decision with the candidates, and bring it back to us for the next meeting.
We will have it.
If she's back next year, I want to sit down there. She's pretty rambunctious.
I think she's pretty tolerant myself.
I think she might want to sit on the other side.
She's tolerant, what does that make Tina?
I thank the board for your clarification on item A.
End that conversation, that line of thought here. The rose between two thorns, right. Okay, we'll go back to the rest of your report, Dr. Schuman.
Yes, first of all, thank you again for your clarification on item A. Moving to item B. We have some very special nights and a very full calendar to celebrate the accomplishments of our students coming up in the next several weeks, and some of the ones right on the forefront. Tomorrow is the Enfield High School Academic Awards Night, and then next week, on Monday and Tuesday, we have the Scholarship Awards Night at Fermi High and at Enfield High, and tomorrow morning, you have the Honors Breakfast. Actually, it's split over two mornings, tomorrow morning and Thursday morning, the Honors Breakfast over at Fermi High School. So, we're moving into the season of celebration, so to speak, culminating with the high school graduations at the third week of June. So, just want to make you aware of that. We also are getting ready for next school year. Item C talks about the Enfield gets ready for grade one at Henry Barnard on Thursday, June 6th, at 6:30 PM, which you want to get on your calendars if you're able to attend. And also in your report, you have your grants report and your personnel report up to May 24th.
Very good, thank you. Now going to item nine, audiences. Is anybody who would like to speak to the board? If so, if you haven't already put your name down, I think Kathy has another sheet over there. Remember, when we call your name, please come up, give your name and your address, and, you know, stay on a topic, and please just keep personalities out of the discussion. With that said, first person on our list is Sue Braun. Please come on up. The next person after her would be Gina Sullivan. Welcome, Sue.
Welcome. Is it on?
Yes, it is.
Sue Braun, Seventeen Light Street, three children, all in the Enfield school system. I'm going to go back in history again. When I moved here, there was a promise of full-day kindergarten. It was being voted on. They decided to expand all the schools. Now it's fifteen years later, and you want to enact it. But, and we haven't seen the new budget yet, from what I read, it would sacrifice learning at other grade levels. At this moment, I don't have a kindergartner. But I know that these cuts outlined in the earlier budget, it was talk of electives at the high school level, guidance, librarians, paraprofessionals, resource rooms, they were going to take the hit. Funny, but my kids use all of those. I will point out, full-day kindergarten advances some of the kids, educates them to a level that they need, and then they'll get into first grade, which my son is currently in. They won't have any resource rooms, so if they're any bit behind, that's the end of The education chopping block is for kindergarteners to have full day. Can you explain to me what you intend to do with the other twelve grades? The split schools at the elementary level has not enhanced education as I had thought it would. I preached on this, I wanted this so bad, and now I'm telling you, I want to move. I have found that there are many kindergarteners that don't even know what a saxophone is. I remember kindergarteners begging to play instruments. High schools need electives to actually graduate. There are rules, believe it or not. The standardized tests, I've heard they're going on the computer. My son actually experienced that. He doesn't type, however. We try to limit some things in my house. I remember my son, who's now in high school, failing math in first grade because he had never touched a computer before, and his teacher thought that was outrageous. He didn't know what a mouse was. He kept looking for the furry thing. There are a lot of kids like that, believe it or not. My child needs, my youngest child needs reading and language support. With the plan that was presented earlier, the resource teachers would be moved to teach full-day kindergarten. My child's in the resource room for half of his day. Where would he go now? Oh, he'd go to the library. Oh, except we're dropping the ball on that, too. My middle child is advanced. He gets no challenges from the school system unless his classroom teacher has time, and thank God, his fourth-grade classroom teacher has had time to challenge him. She has been the first. Most of the others are dealing with other issues, which I can understand. I challenge him at home. My high schooler will need twenty-two to twenty-three credits to graduate. We're not really sure. Choosing next year's classes was hard because of limited placements already, and the rules that you can't take more than one English during a year? Hmm, I thought that was odd. I seriously doubt that anything can bring this school system back on its path right now. I am hoping that eventually we will catch the ball instead of missing an opportunity. As we try to recover our scores and our losses, and I can see every day more behavior problems, more boredom, more uninspired young adults on their way to nothing because they did not get to try things and learn things. Some of this is No Child Left Behind, some of this is Common Core. It's not all your fault. I get that. Last year, I went to a budget meeting and afterwards spent quite a lot of time talking to some town council members who suggested that my looking at all the kids' needs was wrong, and that I should just worry about my own three. So, I'm going to do that from now on. In my own self-interest, I'm telling you to educate my children, to keep the other children in line or suffer the consequences. My child gets bullied or hurt, I will be very outspoken from now on. I won't worry about the feelings of the other parent. If my child gets bored and doesn't learn, you'll pay to get them educated in a different setting. If my child can't graduate because course selection is lacking, you can pay for him to graduate in a timely fashion at another school. It's pretty simple. Educate them all, or educate the kindergarteners. Pay the price at the other twelve grades. Now, on to the armed guards. We don't have riches. If you can't buy books, why would you buy guns? Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Gina?
Hi, Gina Sullivan, 11 Spear Avenue. I've spoken with a few of you via email. I appreciate your time. I'm here this evening to ask the board, if full-day kindergarten is implemented for next year, what can we expect at the current K through II schools? What will happen to, how will the kindergarten, full-day kindergarten work? Is there a plan? Is there enough room? I was under the impression after the reorg that we were full. That's what we did with the reorg. Will there be services, teachers, anything taken away from my current first grader who will be in second grade next year? I'm already aware that there will be cuts at the high school based on the last meeting, and I also have a son that will be a freshman in high school next year. I also mentioned that I'm currently on the building committee, and by 2015, when this is going to be implemented, or has to be implemented, there is room, there might be room to consolidate at that point, high school, but not now. We haven't moved anyone yet. I am all for full-day kindergarten, but not at the expense of our current students in school. All I keep hearing from many places is that the public asked for full-day kindergarten, the public wanted it, so that's what we're doing. Well, I heard loud and clear that the public did not want armed guards, but that's still staying, so how does that work? Give me a minute, I scribbled my notes here. And I was, I was one that was actually for the armed guards initially, let me just state that for the record, but I did research, and I listened, and I watched the news, and I listened to people's comments. And timing of things that have happened in this town have been just too much to swallow, honestly. So, I've changed my stance. Also, I need to understand a couple more things. Doesn't the Board of Ed have the authority to use monies given by the town council as all of you deem appropriate? I was able to get a recording, an audio recording of the town council's budget meeting, thanks to Matt Koppeler and his assistant, that I'm able to get. Anyone's able to get it. And it was very interesting that full-day kindergarten was, monies was put on the table for full-day kindergarten, and only that. You had to promise, you had to promise to bring it back and make sure that they wouldn't be given this money, you wouldn't be given this money unless it went to full-day kindergarten. I didn't realize that's how it works. I didn't think that's how it works, and I'm really disappointed, to say the least, that that's obviously how it works. So, yeah, if anyone's interested in listening to that audio, I would suggest contacting our town manager, because it was very, very enlightening to hear exactly how it all played out. But please consider our students currently in school before you make this decision for full day. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. Vinnie Wazalisa?
Hello, everybody, how you doing?
Welcome.
Well, I heard we were talking about Fermi tonight, so I decided to stop in and say a few things. When I first came to the Board of Ed, I talked to a little bit about the benefits that Fermi would have over, that I feel they have over JFK. On this visit, I thought I'd, you know, touch a little bit on the space issue that we have at JFK, because that seems to be one of the predominant issues at JFK. And from my readings from some of the past reports, especially during the reorganization, the space issue doesn't seem to be a new one. Several times during some of the, some of the reports, when asked if classes were available, or if there was going to be phys ed, physical education concerns with sixth graders, they both stated, oh, we're close to ninety-six to one-hundred percent room utilization, and we're going to get the most being out of our buck without any wiggle room. Another one stated, we are at ninety-five percent utilization, which I know at the time was something we had to do in order to do reorganization with the elementary schools, and it's, and it's something that had to be do. But it seems like that problem still persists even to these days. I hear reports from teachers that, you know, there's still phys ed classes that aren't held in the gym. We have lunch waves that start at ten-thirty in the morning. That's awful early for lunch. Up until the point where we had to discontinue the use of the trailers for security concerns, we were still offering classes inside external trailers to our school. Our classes are now on carts, and I think our end language classes are now on carts that roam around the school, because we don't have dedicated classrooms for these two subjects. We have spaces that were originally designed for one classroom, had to be broken up into, you know, several different classrooms, so that we added more teaching spaces. I read the new 2013 school budget, and it seems like the space issue still seems to be something that needs to be addressed. Under future needs for JFK, there's three things. There's building maintenance, which is windows, and everything that you would normally associate with something that needed to be done between school years. The second bullet item was building expansion or portable classrooms, which indicates to me that we still have a space issue with JFK, and in order to do that, we're either going to have to expand the school or add portable classrooms to the current structure outside of it. And the last one is elective classroom updates, which is just science labs and some other area. So, it clearly states that we still have an issue at JFK as far as space, and there's something has to be done. Right now, after consolidation is done, we're going to have a building across town, Fermi High School, that is forty thousand square feet bigger than JFK. There's a lot of amenities that JFK does not have. It has more classrooms, has larger auditoriums, cafeterias, and I've gone through the last, I went through the whole list before, so I'm not going to bore you with going through the list again. But we do have an opportunity now to say, now that there is a school freed up on the other side of town, how can we make that and utilize that for, to solve our space issue at JFK? In my opinion, Fermi should be our number-one option to solve our space issue. I don't see why we should go into new construction with an existing building when we have a school across town, who has many of the amenities that we are looking for already in place. There'd have to be modifications as far as updating some classrooms. I read the ADA report, and there are ADA issues, but most of the ADA issues are common to the entire structure. Some specialty for classrooms, but for the most part, if you look at them, regardless of the occupancy, the ADA issues, ADA issues are going to have to be handled. And what I'm looking for from the Board of Ed is that, I know the town council has an architect already retained to look into how we can make Fermi High School a community center, and that was built into some of the costs for, I believe, the new high school. What I would like the Board of Ed to do is also make this type of gesture and look into, look into doing the same thing for middle school. Do a feasibility study, and let's look at how we can make Fermi High School adaptable to a middle school. I know it might not be, you know, ideally in some people's views as far as the space is not, you know, conducive to middle school, but it's a way better starting point than we have now with JFK. It's just not big enough. So, we either add on to it, or we add classrooms. In closing, I just want to point out a few things. I just decided one day I'm going to do a petition and see how many people would actually, you know, see my point of view. And I was surprised to see that about one-hundred and fourteen people signed up on it without very little effort at all on my part. I could probably, if I put some effort into it, I could probably get, you know, a thousand signatures. I'm not sure what the board feels is something worth notable as far as the quantity goes, but it's nice to see that there's about a hundred people on here that I have no idea who they are, so it's not like I went out and pulled one-hundred and fourteen of my closest friends and got them to sign a piece of paper. I don't know who most of these people are.
Vinnie, if you could wrap it up, if you would, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all I have in closing. I would like the board just to seriously consider using Fermi as our option for middle school. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Is there anybody else, Kathy? Hamery, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Welcome.
Not bad for your first effort.
Good evening. Thank you very much for the time tonight. My first comment, I want to direct to the agenda, and I'd like to ask that if anybody could, on the board, on the board could amend the agenda, to include a second audience participation piece after the budget discussion, if that's possible, because a lot of the issues that come up tonight, that would be of relevance to the town and the residents, have to do with that budget. And to have the public audience portion of the agenda come before the discussion on the budget doesn't allow us the opportunity to provide response to that and concerns immediately. So, if that can be addressed, I would appreciate that. If it doesn't happen, I understand. Next, to the school representatives. Thank you for taking this opportunity over the last school year to step up to this, and good or bad, I hope this doesn't sour your experiences. I hope it's been a good run, and I encourage you to continue this involvement in the civic process, and to encourage your classmates to do the same. This is what is going to happen in the next, in your generation, that you're going to be stepping up, your classmates are going to be stepping up to fill these seats, to become the next group of leaders. And I would not want to be in your shoes as much as I wouldn't want to be in theirs, but you're getting that civic process a lot earlier than I did, and kudos to you for taking up that role. To the armed guards concern, I've spoken to the group in several forums in the past, and I will say it again, just for the sake of making sure I'm on the record as many times as possible, guns do not belong in schools. They don't. At any point, at any level, they don't belong in there. Having us put one in there doesn't help the situations. On that note, to Mr. Serrard and Mr. Feely, all the best to you and your endeavors. I hope you have the best, I wish you luck. It's an endeavor that any entrepreneurial spirit survives on that, being able to take advantage and find a niche and capitalize on it. That's what it's all about, so kudos to you for that. I agree with what the previous speaker had said. It makes sense to look into Fermi as the next step, but that's a different topic. I don't want to take too much, too much time on that. I appreciate your time this evening. Again, if there is the opportunity to have that second opportunity after the budget, I would look forward to the conversation and not just the monologues that these represent. Thank you.
Thank you. John Fox?
Can I say something to John Fox that has really nothing related? I love what you did on Post and Raffia Road, because I live by the plaza, and I see you out there. I saw you out there measuring, I wondered what you were doing, but I didn't want to be nosy. I was going to stop, be like, what are you doing? And then I saw what you did, and it looks fabulous. And then I see you watering out there, and I don't want, I'm always driving by, and I don't want to scream, "John Fox!" out the window, so. Did a great job.
Thank you. Yeah, that's Woodside Park. And my name's, my name's John Fox, and I live on Fifteen St. Piper Road. And, you know, I should start off by saying, there was a lot of participation from the kids in Rachel's Challenge and Field High Baseball, and that really made the event, you know? And that's the kind of thing, maybe, you know, the people here can foster, you know, and develop that, because they just seem to adapt right to it, you know? And it starts at that age level, I think, if they participate and do that. And I love it, too. And that's, I was out there watering, I was worried about the flowers the other day, before the rain for five days, you know? And the snow, and the frost, and everything else, it's just, so I had the tarp ready. Just real quick, you know, the season's over, I guess you guys have your budget, and I know I fought real hard for you. I hope you are happy with what you got from the town. I, you know, as Gina said, I kind of felt like it was, you know, I don't know how to, the negotiating, I guess, maybe it was win-win, maybe it was win-lose, but it sure doesn't sound like you had a lot of free play, and it almost felt like you were being micromanaged, and maybe this discussion belongs at the other council, you know, meeting. You know, with the armed guards, it's interesting to see how the state's backing off on requiring our guards to have the, whatever training that is that they're going to do. What I'm curious about, though, is the sunsetting provision should still stay in place regardless, you know? I mean, if we went with police, the way our mayor was talking about, I think, then I wondered, well, where's the sunset clause going to take effect if it, if it does or doesn't? You know, we have to put a stop to it at some point. And that's, I was out there watering. I was worried about the flowers the other day before the rain for five days, you know, and the snow and the frost and everything else. It's just, I had the tarp ready. Just real quick, you know, the season's over. I guess you guys have your budget and I know I fought real hard for you. I hope you are happy with, with what you got from the town. I, you know, as Gina said, I kind of felt like it was, you know, I don't know how to, the negotiating, I guess, maybe it was win-win, maybe it was win-lose, but it sure doesn't sound like you had a lot of free play. And it almost felt like you were being micromanaged and maybe this discussion belongs at the other council, you know, meeting. You know, with the armed guards, it's interesting to see how the state's backing off on requiring our guards to have the, whatever training that is that they're going to do. What I'm curious about though is the sunsetting provision should still stay in place regardless, you know? I mean, if we went with police, the way our mayor was talking about, I think, then I wondered, well, where's the sunset clause going to take effect if it, if it does or doesn't, you know? We have to put a stop to it at some point. I can't imagine spending $500,000 a year on that. The other thing, I guess, since it's the topic du jour is the consolidation. I love what you're saying about Chairman Neville, you know, what you're saying about not using Fermi as a middle school. You know, I think JFK, once the enrollment goes down, is going to be suitable. It seems like a friendlier environment. I mean, I went to Fermi, it's not a bad school, but I could see where it doesn't lend itself to community building, you know, and the relationship building that happens at, at the middle school level. And that's it. So, you know, whatever happens with full day K, you know, that's inevitably going to happen, you know, next year or the year after from state mandate. So, you know, that's going to play out eventually and if not this year, then, you know, next year or the year after. But I do hope the, the staff trimming isn't, isn't too bad, you know? I hate to see that and that's probably your toughest job to let people go. So, thank you very much and feel free to water, you know, the Woodside Park if you're ever in the neighborhood.
Thank you, John. We appreciate the work you did with that particular project. It was great.
It really was. It looks so great over there now. I love it and I love the little walk. Yeah, very good.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? At that point, we'll close the audience participation, move on to item 10, unfinished business, which is continue the fiscal year 2013-14 budget discussion in action, if any. We've had a extended discussion with the superintendent regarding personnel and, and parts of the budget here. And I think there's some details that we need to have expanded for us that will take a little bit more time. And I think there's a consensus on the board that we need to schedule another meeting fairly quickly and which would give you the opportunity to have some more comments on it so that we can all feel comfortable with, with the budget we finally approve. And a lot of it has to do with details and some specifics that we just don't have tonight to make that and we want to make that decision once. So at this point, I'd like to table this until we can get that information, if it's, if the board's willing.
Motion to table discussion of budgets to a special meeting for specifically the budget discussion.
Second. Made by Donna and seconded by Tom.
Point of order. What are we closing debate on, on the budget discussion?
We're moving to table.
Just tabling it for a special meeting. We can get the details. And at this point, I don't believe there's any discussion on tabling. So could you use a roll call, please?
Mr. Genitis?
No.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Feely?
Yes.
Mr. Grady? Mrs. Suzak?
Yes.
Mr. Sarard?
Yes.
Ms. Hall? Chairman Neville?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Can we, at this, just take a break at this point and pick out a date and time that is convenient and the very near future? I know that the days are full, but if you could please look at your calendars. I can't answer a question at this point.
Special meetings don't include public comment.
We can, we will, we will include public comment.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sure.
Our intent is to have public comment. We just don't have the time right now. We don't have the details we need to make that decision. And what are the dates that you have on your calendar, Dr. Schuman? Thank you.
The awards assembly is tomorrow evening. We could do it, you know, we have, really, there's an awful lot of things. Monday and Tuesday next week, we have the two awards assemblies. We have Monday, the 10th, and we have a regular meeting scheduled for the 11th.
I don't want to wait that long. I don't think any of us do. Is the...
Thursday?
I'm not available this Thursday.
I'm not, I'm not either. I'm committed to that. What's Monday, what's on the, on the third?
Third is the Fermi High School Scholarship Awards Assembly at 6:30 PM.
Could we meet at 5:00?
I don't have a problem meeting at 5:00.
I mean, if we have to, if we have to meet earlier, I don't really want it to go on much longer.
No, I don't either. I could meet at 5:00. You know, Kevin, are you available?
Microphone?
This week is better.
Then I just don't want to wait until Monday.
Friday? Do we have anything on Friday?
I can make Friday.
Friday?
Friday.
Can you make Friday?
Yeah.
Can you?
What time on Friday?
The time is, I'm open. I can do it at 5:00 or...
The earlier the better.
Earlier is better. Peter, can you do? Jeff?
I could be available Friday.
Yeah? Yeah? Joyce, did you say? Vinny, can you do, can you do Friday at 5:00? We're running out of days. It's, the scholarship nights are...
It's Friday, Bill.
You do by phone?
Yes.
So he could do it, he could do it by phone. So the only other one would be Jen, right? Do you have any idea?
At worst, she's as absent as she was tonight. At best, she could be here.
But we could also do a phone if we had to do that. Okay. Why don't we schedule it at 5:00 on Friday and we can just keep it going this week at this point in time?
With due respect, we don't have the opportunity to adjust our schedules to meet that, to be here and to speak out as the public. I understand.
Okay. I think we're trying, we're trying to kill two birds with one stone. We're trying to get it done as quickly as possible so that the superintendent can make some decisions particularly around staffing because, and scheduling, which need to be done fairly quickly. And I think the other thing is, is that both he and some of these folks have commitments as well to meet, to go to some of these activities that are going on at the high schools. Tina?
I, I want Kevin to be able to participate. The only thing is it's Friday night at 5:00 and I don't know if you're, if we're like offering audience participation, I don't know if we can get the participation there.
Okay.
Friday at 5:00. That's just my...
What's the matter, next Tuesday until?
There's award ceremonies Monday and Tuesday.
We did it early. Kevin, are you available on the phone? Can you be available on the phone? For Monday or Tuesday next week?
I'm not available Monday.
I can typically guess and if something falls through, I'll tell you.
Don't understand.
But how about Tuesday?
Tuesday, I'm fine.
Can you?
My daughter's getting her scholarship.
But we did it earlier. We were talking...
We're talking about doing it at 5:00. 4:30? Do I hear a 4:30?
Why can't we do next Tuesday? Those who can make it can make it and it affords the, the public to come because they're used to Tuesdays and Mondays.
I think the problem is we want the superintendent or assistant superintendent here as well. And there's a scholarship night there as well and I...
Well, I guess we have a tough decision to make. I mean, this budget, if we don't get it solved, there's not going to be anything next year.
I agree. But I think, it sounds like we can do Tuesday if we do it at 5:00 and we get it done. Can you make that, Peter?
I don't know. I don't know yet. I have to go home and look at my schedule.
Tina, can you do 5:00 Tuesday? Okay.
I can do 5:00.
Tom? Joyce? Okay, I can, I can as well. I need to be at that scholarship thing at 7:00. We can work that out.
Again, I mean, if you're trying to factor in audience participation, I, I don't see the difference between Friday at 5:00 or Tuesday at 5:00. It seems to me that the argument is they need to be here for 7:00. And because we have all of these other commitments, I mean, I mean...
I think we're trying, I understand. I do think we're trying, but it also may give Jeff some more additional time to get the information that we need.
I think Friday at 5:00 is honestly that, it's...
Too quick.
It's, no, I just, it's the weekend.
Yeah. Let's schedule it, it seems a consensus to do it at Tuesday at 5:00. Jeff, can we do it? We'll do it right, can you see if we can schedule it here?
Here? You're going to be at Enfield High School for the, after, the session afterwards. Would you like to try and have the meeting there or would you like to have it here?
That would be a good idea. If you can pick a date and let the folks know when it's going to be, we need to get it out to people.
It would not be televised. You're absolutely right. So your choice would be?
No, he's talking about 5:00. We could do it in the Enfield High Library.
It needs to be televised.
No, why don't we just do it live here and we'll go over there? Okay? Okay. Well, we can also get it downstairs if we had to do it then, because like we televise live there too. Sounds great. And if you could get it out on our appropriate pages, Twitter and YouTube and all that so people know. Okay, let's, let's move on to item 11, new business. Dr. Schuman, the Lester J. Bodley Memorial Scholarship.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet, you have some confidential information regarding the winners of this, and recipients of this award. The school has asked us to keep it confidential until the awards assembly next week. Therefore, we're asking you to approve them because it requires board approval and approve them as student A and student B so that they're, they will be surprised, as will their families when they receive those awards on next Tuesday evening.
Mrs. Hall?
I move that the Enfield Board of Education accept or approve awarding the 2013 Lester J. Bodley Memorial Scholarships for student A and student B.
Microphone? Microphone, please.
At Enfield High School. Timing is pretty good. I did some research on Mr. Bodley as well and he is a Navy vet, or was, a Navy veteran who had been very prominent in, in his service work besides the work that Mrs. Ogunas had given us the information about.
Second motion. Okay, could you just read the motion again, if you would please, just so we get it for the record, but Kathy?
Certainly. I move that the Enfield Board of Education award the 2013 Lester J. Bodley Memorial Scholarships for student A and student B at Enfield High School.
Seconded. Seconded. We moved to second. Is there any discussion?
So we have no idea who this, these people are.
I think we have an idea, but they've asked us, because the students, it's in our packet, Peter.
Surprise the students.
They want it to be a surprise at this point. They don't want it to be public at this point.
So you're asking us to vote for somebody that we don't know who it is?
We're recommending, we're, we're, we're accepting the recommendation of the, of the staff committee, which is what was set up in the request.
And we have some characteristics provided, so we know a little bit about them.
We've done for the past...
And we've used names in the past.
Is there, is there any other discussion? Sensing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Genitis?
I'll abstain from this one.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Feely?
Yes.
Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. Suzak?
Yes.
Mr. Sarard?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Chairman Neville?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 11B, discussion regarding the use of the Enrico Fermi Building. Dr. Schuman, I know we've discussed a little bit about this. I don't know whether you want to bring us up to date on this.
Yes, well, this was something that the board has asked to have placed on an agenda so you can begin this discussion and move the issue forward also in our governance meetings with the town manager and the mayor. They've asked also for the board to begin to discuss this so they can move forward. This evening, I have provided with the two documents I was able to obtain. One was the Enrico Fermi ADA compliance study dated 9 December 2010, which talks about the ADA compliance work that was, is required. And I will, as a side note, let you know that following the referendum vote in November, with the plan being that, at that point, that Fermi High School was not going to be used for a school, we did contact the Office of Civil Rights and they have given us a waiver on moving this work forward due to the fact that we're not going to be using that as a school. If the board does decide to move it as a school, we are obligated to, once again, notify that office and then begin to move forward to make those ADA compliance issues be resolved. So you have that work there and then you also have, as our visitor from the audience pointed out, the architectural firm which is working with us for the renovation of Enfield High School, has also done some preliminary work on a possible layout and utilization of Enrico Fermi High School for other purposes, including many town offices and recreational facilities. So we provided that from you. Both these documents were obtained from the town manager's office. So you have what they have and you may probably have as many questions as you have, things to say, but we're ready to start to gather any more information you'd like us to so that you can move forward and make your decisions.
And since I'm the one who brought it up last, at the last meeting, to get it on our agenda, I guess I thought naively that there, a lot of this data was readily available and from our conversations the other night, it appears that it's not. I know the ADA document you shared with us, I, I don't know, that's, I assume it's public, I just don't know where it is for the public to get access to it. If you can make it available on our webpage and anything that we get together for this so the public can take a look at it, our intent is to give, to have a thorough discussion of this and to get some data on it. And I think this is a first step. I think, and maybe it's my aging brain cells, but I think Dr. Gallagher had some of this information in terms of the specific dollar amounts that may be worthwhile seeking him out on because we had gotten this, and I don't, I looked at all of this before the meeting, the 20 or so pages that we had, and there weren't any specific dollar amounts. A lot of stuff that had to be done, but there weren't dollars attached to that. And I'd be interested in seeing that. I'm sure the board probably has a lot of other information and I was wondering, because I, certainly we don't have enough information, nor was it our intent to make any kind of an action decision tonight. Our intent is to gather data, listen to folks, give folks a chance or several opportunities to speak once we have the data available to them and then make that decision. And I'm not in any rush to make that until we get the data. So I, personally, I'd like to see whatever dollar figures we have, and I would respectfully suggest you get ahold of Dr. Gallagher and Art Pong Grants, who I believe was involved early on with, with the ADA cost involved. I'd be curious about what the, the architect that the town was looking at in terms of the, the facilities structure for the Recreation Center, because some of those would still apply no matter what the use would be. I'd be interested in the, in the dollars that we still owe on JFK and dollars, if anything, that we owe at Fermi. I don't think we owe them, but I'd like you just to double check that. Okay, but I know, I know we owe dollars at, on JFK. And just, just, well, the spot's still going here. I, I'd like to, to look at what, if any, educational concerns your folks would have in terms of looking at that as a potential middle, middle school, as some folks have, have put out there to, to see what, what issues there may be there. And I would also suggest that we keep in mind that if we're opening the school in order to fix the ADA things, we would have to probably go to a referendum to get those dollars. And so that would, that would, to use it, we'd have to either do it concurrently or immediately afterwards. And my question is, if we delayed on that, in other words, closed the school, would we be able to open it a year or two afterwards without doing major compliance issues? Because I, in my own mind, I don't see how we would do two projects concurrently and have another, another referendum out there. So I'm, I'm really asking as an informational question. So those are my questions. And Mr. Feely has some questions as well.
My question may be an easy yes or no, or it may take some research, but if we were to keep that usage as a school and renovate to new, would it afford us the opportunity for more grant monies toward that project as we have experienced with the Enfield High School project? That would mitigate some serious costs involved.
Probably not as much, though.
But what it would do though is it would make it more feasible.
Let me have, Donna may know the answer to that.
Actually, what we would have to do is, again, we'd have to go through the same process, we'd have to go through referendum. We would not be because the grants have gone down, but we would probably be somewhere in the high 60% reimbursement for a renovate to new. That always reinverses more than new construction.
Yes, go ahead, Tom.
Thing to remember about Fermi is it still has a soil contamination issue, and you can't break that eight-inch cap. When you start talking about renovating to new, you're in that land of measurable possibility of violating the eight-inch cap, and because we, when we did these, the capping instead of the full soil remediation, we bought it, we own it. So the town would be responsible for paying for any, any DEP violation as a result of that. I mean, that's why we can't even put a tent up.
Could you see if there are any, any knowledge, and I'm thinking Art Pongrants may have the knowledge, about the cost involved in doing anything with the contaminated soil, and what the details are? Because he would, he was here during that timeframe, and he may be able to get it. Tina?
Tom's right, it's a gazillion dollars if you break this.
No, I just want to have the real dollars on the table, Peter. I, I remember it being done, I just, I think Art.
It's somewhere, it's somewhere.
I just want to have him dig into it and find out where it is. But that's a presumptuous. I take that back, Peter.
Look into it.
Look into it, please. Tina?
Peter said something earlier, and he said he might be the lone wolf on something we were talking about earlier, but I think I'm the lone wolf on this. I have been in JFK multiple times. There are very, there's closets that have been manipulated into remedial reading rooms. We can't use the outside portables because of concerns. The cafeteria is crowded. There's so many less teaching stations in the gym as compared to at Fermi, you have bigger gyms. I don't think that, I think it was presumptuous that an architect was hired to look at that as a community center. We have not had enough discussion on it, we just got on the ground running with the high school consolidation. I think Fermi should seriously be considered as a middle school. That's just, I'll be the lone wolf on that one.
You're not. Tina, Tina, all we're looking for is data, that's what we're looking for. We're not, we're not making a judge on it, it's certainly.
I understand that, but when we are getting, well, the town hired an architect, and the town did this, nobody's made any decisions yet.
We, certainly outside of our, our realm to do it, that's something the town did. Donna?
Actually, Kevin, if you're looking for a ballpark figure on that, it's about $200 a square foot to renovate to new, as opposed to $350 to, as high as for the crack schools, $400 a square foot for new construction.
Would we have to renovate to new based on space, on the 1,200 kids, or, because there, when we graduated from Fermi, there was a heck of a lot more kids than there is now.
You don't get reimbursed unless you renovate to new.
I get that, but.
You're saying what's the cost either way?
I'm saying, I understand that we get more reimbursement to renovate to new, but would we have to renovate to new? We'd have to do the ADA.
If you're going to do the ADA, you probably need to do the everything. I mean, the building's what, 1970 it opened? So you're looking at, you know, your furnace, all your heating, all your stuff like that. It's way better to go in, renovate to new, and the town, you know, gets its reimbursement, and you have virtually a brand-new building. You've got, you know, 40 to 50 years of, you know, minimal maintenance.
Right, and I, and I agree. And so basically, what's going to happen is, in another four years, there'll be a referendum to put it through as a community center, or a referendum to put it through as a middle school.
That's probably true.
You'd probably have to have a referendum either way, but you could also, you could, in the same vein, you could go to JFK and renovate that as new to deal with any, any issues that they may have as well. Peter, you had a question or a comment?
Both, I think. It's another wolf in the woods here. Who decided Fermi wasn't going to be used as a school?
We did.
We did?
The board voted on it, yes.
When?
No, not, not be used as a school or not be used as, as Anfield High School.
As a school?
Nobody, nobody has voted on that.
But Jeff just got through saying.
No, they're, they're asking us, the, the mayor and the town manager are asking us to, to look into it and decide when or if we would not need it as a school. It is our building, it's education's building until they no longer need it, as is any school in the district.
So they've hired somebody to look at the building for another use other than a school, though?
Correct.
Well, I'm glad they're telling us again what to do.
Well, Peter, they actually put it out there, that's been, that's been out there for.
Well, I know it's been out there behind the scenes, too. And who let the building fall into such disrepair?
It's ADA, that has nothing to do with disrepair, it's changing the rules.
We're talking about the boiler, we're talking about.
It's just age, and the roof, too. I mean, you'd have to redo that.
So once again, who let the building fall into such disrepair? We don't control the upkeep of the schools anymore.
You're correct, we don't.
As far as Fermi going into a middle school, I like, I still like the idea. I know a lot of people have come up and said, you know, it's not conducive to a middle school and stuff like that. It's a school. Your, your classes are held inside a class. Somebody had made a comment about JFK, and it's set up so nice to be a, you know, it does community and stuff like that. No, it doesn't. It doesn't. You're in White House in such-and-such a team, and that's basically, for most kids, their existence, unless you happen to be in Mrs. Hargrave's, one of her programs or something, or now with Rachel's Challenge, and that does bring in, in certain kids. But no more, no less. It's not like saying the kids at Fermi aren't part of a community, they are. But, and once again, the only reason I wouldn't want to see the middle school be moved over to Fermi is because I'd still like to see that alternative ed program and voc ed program being used in at least part of Fermi. If you, if you want to make it into a recreational facility and stuff like that, fine, but give us a floor and a half for alternative ed and voc ed. I mean, we're getting kindergarten, let's get something for the other kids that are in the system, and we've got a building right there that can be used.
I've got Donna, then Tom, then Tina.
I guess the only problem I have with Fermi is I really, I dislike the interior classrooms, and I will tell you, we are going to all the meetings on the consolidated high school, they had double-loaded corridors, is what they commonly refer to them as, and the building committee told them to remove them, and the architect said it's going to, you know, cost you a little bit more money, and finally they said, well, why are you doing it? And he said, you know, when 48 out of 50 people say interior classrooms are not conducive to good education environment, I need to listen to what they're saying. And I think that that, in my eyes, is the one critical problem that Fermi has. It has those interior classrooms. And Tom, if you could get a way to pull that center out, without touching the soil, I'd be all set.
Tom?
You know, I understand, I build schools, so I understand that there are definitely two trades of thought there. And 40 years ago, 50 years ago, everyone was saying schools should be institutional settings, and economy of space, and, and you know, you focus, less distractions, the more, the better your students. So I understand that these, these philosophies change over time. Currently, the philosophy is open spaces and natural lighting and bright colors or neutral colors, and I understand that aspect of it. So as far as it being a school, I mean, I think we're appropriate as a board prior to making a decision, to collecting as much information as possible. I think before, at least we have an informed opinion when it comes on it. I do know that the soil, the soil issue is a consideration that has to be there because, again, it could be very, very, very expensive if you incidentally break that cap. I can only offer you an estimate as to what that would be if you did a full soil remediation, and two and a half acres costs about $4 million bucks. So, and that just happened behind my office in East Hampton, so I can tell you that that's the effective price. And, and you have to be careful when, when we're looking at that. I think that's, that's the downside of, of the soil problem, whether it exists or not. I've said it last year, there's a piece of paper, it says it does. And no matter how you address that problem, even if it's having DEP set up a, an office here in Anfield and test it for the next three years to verify that we don't have a problem, you're still looking at a very expensive bill. So, again, I've, I've never, I've never closed my mind off to the possibility of using it as a middle school. I'm, even though I build them, I'm not sold on either idea. I know those, those ideas change. What's better for education? I think a whole bunch of really good teachers can overcome an environment, so.
Tina?
I think Peter and I are sitting together too long because we're starting to think alike. We're starting to think alike.
Joyce, you and I were on the same page earlier, too.
I also, we have to keep in mind then, at the same time, like Donna's saying, it would be, at the same time, we should be looking at the needs of JFK and expanding JFK, because I know, not just with hall passing and lunch, you know, there's a lot of kids in a very small band room, and chorus, and.
Stage.
And the stage, and the auditorium, so I definitely think that there's a lot of, we have a lot on our plate. I really, really, we see these emails, we see the suspension reports, and I really wish we had something for those kids, and like Peter's saying, like a voc ed or something to keep these kids in our school system, but some, some way to keep it, that just breaks my heart, so.
Any other comments?
One more. For, for people out there who are proponents of moving JFK up there, one thing I think we, we should keep in the back of our minds, too, is Stowe will be coming back online again, and Stowe could also be used as an annex. You could do a multitude of things, and even have a gym class walking to Stowe, it's a mile.
We are not on the same page anymore.
Just because I walk a mile, I walk to these meetings.
That was short.
No, we could get a short bus running back and forth. But I mean, Stowe, Stowe is sitting there, and, and, you know, I mean, that, I think should come into the equation.
Maybe the voc ed program.
But, yeah, I really think that would be a better place for it. But the building is there. I look around at a lot of systems in other communities, and, you know, Anfield started up, and the, the neighborhood schools was, was the strength of this system from the days we were an all-American city through the late 60s, early 70s and 80s, right into the 90s. In fact, until we did the reorg, the, the neighborhood school was what I think was the strength of, a part of the strength of this community. But it's no longer there, and as you go around other communities, you start to see where you have towns, and I, I think Southwick is probably one of the best examples, just the high school, the middle school, couple of the grammar schools, they're all located in the same place. And as far, there's a lot of pluses for doing stuff like that. I remember talking to, going over to Suffield High and talking to one of the VPs over there, and how a lot of the bus runs, you're, you're having a mixture of grade levels and everything because their neighborhood bus runs. And at $50,000 or $55,000 a pop for a bus, the more, the more kids you have in one place, I, I think it's conducive to saving a lot of money, particularly if, if their neighborhood runs. And JFK could, the, the existing building could conceivably be turned into a 3, 4, and 5 school. There's a lot of things out there for it, but I just wanted to throw out that, keep, keep Stowe on the plate, too.
Yeah, it comes back, it should come back within a year, I believe, I think there's one more year on that contract, if I'm not mistaken. Is there any other data that we want Dr. Schuman to gather as part of this information that we need to get? Yes, Kevin?
Just a simple one, I don't know if it's premature, but what kind of transportation costs would be incurred on a plus minus?
Good point.
We've already lost one student, Rip.
I don't know, Katie, do you have anything you want to add into this discussion, being from Fermi?
Not yet.
Okay. Very good answer. There's a real politician in you, that's a great answer. You've been hanging around, never mind, I'm not going here. I guess I'd, I'd be looking for some educational questions to be answered as well. If you're looking at it as a middle school, then you should look at what the physical needs are. If there are going to be some things, ADA, that maybe some, you know, they're talking about changing the labs and stuff like that, they, you know, to, to see how it would fit with our current middle school curriculum and, and structure. Okay, and so, I mean, I think you should be talking to your people about what those needs are, to include them in it as well.
And also, are there going to be any other state mandates coming down the pipe for new STEM or STEAM standards at a middle school level?
I wouldn't be surprised if it goes to that level, but I, I think it's a good question. We're trying to look at this once and do a thorough job. So I think we've given you quite a bit of work. Why don't we keep this on the agenda, okay? And we'll put it on the agenda, and keep it on the, as you get information, if you could put it out there. I don't want to lock in a time that we'll make the decision. It won't be for the next couple of meetings, I want a thorough discussion of this. So if you would. Yes? All right. Very good. Why don't we move on then to, do we have any board committee reports? Joyce?
I attended the last of the season of the Head Start Policy Committee meeting last Thursday, and there were a couple of things that came out of it that you might be interested in. As our grants report indicates, the federal sequestration impact has hit with a 5.2% reduction in their grant. However, I have a chart, but let me summarize it for you. There's been a remarkable growth between the fall and the spring in the abilities of these preschool students. Literacy has improved by 67%, mathematics 61%, social-emotional by 42%, cognitive, an increase of 42%, fine motor skills 35%, language 34%, and gross motor skills 36%. In every area, they have shown an increase in ability between fall and now. So we have an effective program. The one point I'd like to share with you is that there were, there are parents, I've bragged about them before, that are very involved with Head Start, but they've also seen a potential need for redoing rooms for our kindergarten plan. So they have volunteered in more than one instance to help with any room reorganization that is necessary. One of the, well, alumnis who gave, give reports for the grandparents-raising grandchildren group indicated that she felt that they could get volunteers from Target as their community aspect to do the same thing. So we've got volunteers to help move whatever, should we find it, that it's necessary. That's the end of my report.
I have a question for Joyce.
Go ahead.
When you were talking about that 5.2 reduction in the grant?
That was a grant.
Is that a 5.2 reduction or a reduction in increase?
That's a reduction of the existing grant. They have to make up $40,000.
That's what that costs, okay. Any other committee reports? At this point, then, go to board member comments, and I'm going to start with Katie.
Okay, so of course, there's a lot going on at the end of the year. On the 10th, we had senior prom, and that was really fun, and then. Oh, thank you. And I saw Brandon's, too. On the 15th was our, on the 15th was our spring instrumental concert, and last Friday was Fermi Idol, that was also fun. Congrats to Dylan and Gina for winning. And then last Thursday was senior class picnic, and finally, coming up, everything else. Tomorrow and Thursday is the honors breakfast at 7:30, and Friday is class night for the seniors. Next Monday, as we've said before, is our awards and scholarship night at 6:30, and then the Tuesday after that is our Fermi Expo, which is going to exhibit work from all our students in a bunch of different departments around the school. So that's it.
Very good, thank you, Katie. Peter?
First, I'd like to take this opportunity to just throw a shout-out to the teachers in Oklahoma, because once again, there were countless stories of teachers and what they did for their kids in the schools that got hit by the tornadoes. I'd also like to wish a friend of mine, Diane, happy birthday, she's 63. And on more on a serious note now, just to, I don't know if Josh is hanging around, I don't think anybody's going to amend the, the agenda tonight because we still have to go into executive session and stuff. There's just not enough time. I, I respond to some of the, the parents, speakers tonight, and I'm in perfect agreement with you that I do, too, have trouble with the kindergarten at the sacrifice of things that are going to be happening at the high schools, or as a result of the new kindergarten things that could possibly be hap, not possibly, are going to happen at the high schools. I thought a lot of the, the logic that we tried to instill upon our public was that one of the things with the consolidation of the two high schools. one of the things with the consolidation of the two high schools would be a consolidation of the staff also at the high schools, thereby saving monies. And it seems like we're getting a little premature here on lowering the staff at the high schools. Somebody made a comment about the reorg and the consolidation, and I can tell you that it might not be, have been the smoothest thing in the world, and we still have the curse of what happened with the busing and stuff like that and daycare. But there are so many positive effects that have come out of the reorg, getting the class sizes and teachers at the same level, working together, that a heck of a lot more good came out of it than bad. Something else was about spending money on books. If you just look at the figure, I mean, I remember being on a committee where Joyce and Donna were on it, and I thought they hit the million-dollar lottery shopping spree or something when it came to books. We've spent a lot of money the last three years on books, an awful lot of money. Resource Room teachers will not be ones that are being moved into teaching the kindergarten There is a plan, a very detailed plan. We can't go into it yet, I don't think, but there's definitely a plan out there should and when we do go to full-day kindergarten.
Excuse me, point of order.
Yep.
I believe we're treading on very thin ice in this conversation. Please be careful.
On which one?
On personnel issues.
What do you think the budget should be?
How what?
I think we're talking about the budget, which we're going to take up at next Tuesday night at 5:00.
Nobody's going to be there, though. And, oh, well, and then, I'm on my last one. The Board of Edu, somebody else made a comment, the Board of Education does have the power to spend its money, and somebody said there was an agreement for the money based on implementing a full-day kindergarten, and I think that was rather obvious. Okay.
Tina?
I'll start by saying JFK, the eighth grade formal is next, not next, yeah, a week from Friday, June 7. And the eighth grade trip is going to be June 18 at High Meadow. Then the breakfast, wouldn't, do you remember when the breakfast is? There's a breakfast for the eighth graders coming up at, in the end of June. I've gotten a lot of feedback from people for, against full-day kindergarten, and I know what people have struggled against, because sometimes, as a board member, it's hard because I'm going to make a decision that's not going to maybe benefit my kids directly, but I'm here to, to work for all the families in Enfield, not just my kids. But I will fight for the, for my kids as well. And I think that with just a little bit more information, we can come up with something very fair. And I think that's what people needed to know. We just needed some clarification because we want to make the best decision for the kids, and we didn't feel that we could make a very good decision, the best decision for the kids tonight. So I just wanted to put that out there. But everyone hears you, and we listen. And I'm glad I'm not the lone wolf on the Fermi, the Fermi saga.
Kevin?
First of all, I want to also reiterate from earlier's Remembrance Day and Memorial Day, thank you to all of those who serve, not only current, but in the past. Without them, we wouldn't be here to have these discussions. Also to reverberate what Tina's saying, we need more information to be able to come to you guys, whether you're able to attend or not, and I know it's tough on all of us, myself included, to rework schedules on a moment's notice, but it is important enough to where we do need more information. Otherwise, we're not doing our job. So, so it's not, any gamesmanship going on is strictly, we need more information. As Member Hall was suggesting about the success of Head Start, I would ask perhaps, maybe to legitimize the effectiveness of the program, that perhaps we should take on these students that she has indicated have been successful and shown their improvements, and track them through the third or fourth grade and see if that actually holds up and where they do. Because that in itself would actually give us a true case study, and we can quit this guesswork as to whether or not the old studies that Head Start doesn't work are accurate, or the ones that say that does work are accurate. You know, it'd be great, within our own community, to have that real information at our hands. So just as a thought.
I'd actually like to respond to the comments that the town council is dictating what we do with our budget. Goal number three, started formally a year ago, January, formulated in September of the past year. Goal number three of the Board of Education is to establish full-day kindergarten. We put it on the table. Then negotiations go back and forth. We listen to the community. I think that a sign of support isn't necessarily a sign of, that they're dictating to you. So I think you should read our goals again. Goal number three, Board of Education, full-day kindergarten. Thanks.
Tom?
No, I'm not asleep. The Board of Education has made kindergarten a priority. We made it a focal point of our budget presentations. The public has said it was a priority, and my, my feeling is because of the budget presentations. And the town has found a way to fund it. They've heard everybody and, you know, they, they realize that this is something that the board is focused on, this is something that the folks are focused on. And to suddenly say, because we didn't get the whole nut, we don't, it's no longer our priority, I don't understand it. I don't. Very rarely do we have an opportunity, especially the past 12 years, to put a program in the table without being mandated to do it. I mean, everyone's saying that it's going to help with our remediation rates, it's going to help across the board, and it's just going to make education better, it's going to make it more competitive when it comes to the, the alternative schools. And, and I, I listen to it and say, I agree. And, and to suddenly say, well, you know, this might have an impact, you're right, it will have an impact. And one of the reasons that we're discussing, and we've put off the budgetary discussion, was to actually have a discussion about that impact. I can tell you where, I agree with everybody else that said it. I mean, the reason that we're doing this is so that we make the right decision. And, and I can tell you that the impact is not going to be as bad as it's been made out, at least in even the worst-case scenario. I mean, you're not going to see these monster class sizes that I've, I've heard about. I mean, some of the things, yeah, I understand, they're going to be tough to swallow. I mean, but we have an opportunity to put a program in, and we very rarely have that opportunity. And we went out on a limb and said, hey, we want this. And the town council went out on a limb and said, we'll find the money for you. And if we do anything else, and not keep our promise, because it wasn't, I mean, this is, we said, look, if you guys can find a way to do it, we'll do it. Then we are, we, our word means nothing. It don't mean nothing. I mean, we're doing something good for the school system, and, and everyone, I think, on the board acknowledges, well, except for Peter, acknowledges that it's good for the school system, and I think Peter would be against it no matter what. But again, again, I'm just, I know, I understand. But I will, I will, again, I, this is something that I feel, and I think the consensus of the board feels, is good for the Enfield school system, overall. And, and to say that, you know, that this is going to be damaging to education, well, I, I don't see that. And I, I mean, our superintendent of schools says it won't be. So I think I'm going to leave it at that.
Joyce?
Mr. Chair, since my name was invoked, I'd like the chance to reply.
Basically, Mr. Sherrod was wrong to invoke, evoke your name.
But he said something.
Peter, I apologize.
No, it's not, I don't even care that my name was brought up, it's what I said. I believe kindergarten is important, but it's got to be prioritized. That's my whole point.
Okay. Joyce?
As far as Head Start tracking is concerned, we've requested that information for many, 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 many years. And I keep being told that the data will be collected or has been collected, but I've never gotten a report. So the idea is not new, Kevin. We really want that information. I also learned today that Connecticut is being sued again.
For what?
Connecticut parents sue state over education laws that allegedly don't fulfill students' constitutional rights. This suit was filed on May 2 in Connecticut Superior Court by two parents from Waterbury, who are asking the judge to halt further implementation of the state's 2010-2012 education reform laws on the grounds that they are not fulfilling students' constitutional rights to an adequate education. Okay? That's suit number two. The other one, which has been ongoing for many years, has yet to be settled, but its focus was to have the adequate funding for our adequate education. I spent the day today in Cromwell, attending the Connecticut Superintendent's Leadership Summit, which is a product of a new organization, which is a coalition, actually, LEED Connecticut, which is developed in partnership with the Connecticut State Department of Education, the Connecticut Center for School Change, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, the Connecticut Association of Schools, the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, the District Management Council, of which I know nothing, a group called New Leaders, also something I'm not familiar with, and the University of Connecticut NAG School of Education. The materials for this two-day event will be posted on websites, either the state, both, all of them, actually. Connecticut State Department of Education website, CAPS, the, the Public School Superintendent's Group, and LEED Connecticut websites will all have the information on their websites once this is over, which doesn't end until tomorrow. But it was most informative, and one of, I went to two of the workout sessions, one on early childhood education, and we'll discuss that at some point other than that, and the other one on Common Corps, which we, Common Corps, which we are definitely involved in.
Anything else?
I think that'll do for now, although Moore, Moore has come up with the, that's, that group, let's see, what's the title? But anyway, they're planning or have identified an enhancing education efficiencies, and their focus has been common calendar, which they may actually propose legislation.
All set?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Just to thank the speakers for coming up tonight. I think, judging by some of the emails I'm getting from folks, there's been some misunderstanding in terms of the proposed cuts and proposed cuts. They go back several meetings to what Dr. Schuman had presented, what the possible impact could be when we were talking about the manager's budget. And we had asked him to kind of tally it up, and he came up with a way to get there. It was not his recommendation, it was really just tallying up those things. The board would have to make the ultimate decision on those things. And I can tell you that most of those things would not be in the, in the board's approved budget, but it was a way to get to that amount. In terms of breakfast, it's at 10:30, it's been 10:30 in the 40 years that I was at JFK. It would be 10:30 if it was at, at Fermi because of scheduling. It's a scheduling issue. It's, the last lunch gets over quarter of one, and it's, it's really purely a scheduling issue. It's not an issue of room in the cafeteria. So it's, it's, and actually, the kids are very hungry at 10:30, because they've been there since 7:30, and a lot of them, and they have a half-hour lunch, and it takes them the next half-hour to cook the next lunch. That's, that's, and they do have fresh food there. So that's, that's just a, a scheduling issue. It's, it's more an issue for us because we don't live those kind of lives, but they do, and they're, and they come home and they eat another meal for you. In terms of the, the budget itself, if you recall at the budget hearing, I didn't go down and, and kind of beat up the council and say, you have to give us this amount. My comments were more to the, the idea that we all want the same thing. We all said that all-day kindergarten was something that we all wanted. And what I said was, we have to find some common ground to get there, okay? And budget's a negotiating process. You know, we got trucks out of this budget, $1.3 million worth of trucks. We got adult daycare. We did get security, and we did get all-day kindergarten. The number that came up from them, that they considered, was a number that if, that I gave them, they said, what would it cost to do this? Could you do it with, what was that number, that middle ground that you asked us? And I gave them that number because we thought that we could do that, okay? In a budget process, you don't get, nobody gets everything they want. And I think what they wanted to make sure of, and they didn't ask us to vote on it, nor do they hold us accountable, can you do it for that? Is there a consensus in the board? If you get enough money to do that, can you do it? We didn't vote on it. And we, we asked for consensus, and we did. I, I think it was something, as Tom pointed out, that was, and Donna pointed out, was one of our goals. It's been one of my goals for many years, one of the board's goals for many years, and I think this was the time to, to get it. I don't think if we went on a couple more years, that it would be possible. I think this is that time, and I think it was time to do it. So just as, as some further information on that. I think we do all want the same things. We want as fair a process, we can get to, to get what's best for the kids. And I think that's why we ran. We certainly don't get anything out of this, other than a satisfaction that we can hopefully improve things. And so that's what it's about. Anyway, I also had the opportunity today to go to a presentation that came out of our Enfield Suicide Prevention Committee, and it was called Postvention. And it was, it was gathering a group of 28 folks together for a two-day workshop to deal with the aftermath of any kind of tragic death or, and it was, is one, or suicide. It was part of the process that we went through to try to prevent, intervene, and, and deal with the, the tragedy of untimely deaths and, and suicide, particularly youthful suicides. And I think Rachel's challenge that was mentioned tonight was one of the offshoots of that. I think the thing that John Fox was dealing with is one of the offshoots of that. We have wonderful kids, and we need to involve them, we need to change the climate of the schools so that we make it more comfortable for them, and we also need to address those kinds of issues. And I think that I was pleased today to go there. We had representatives from the state that was there as well, and I stayed for about half a day, but it was, it was really a very, very worthwhile workshop. So I'm pleased that the process we started almost two years ago after a tragedy has borne some fruit. That being said, we can move on to item 14, approval of minutes. Need to approve the regular meeting minutes for May 14, 2013. I entertain a motion. Moved by Vinnie. Seconded by Tina. Any discussion? All those in favor by a show of hands? Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous. Tina, is there any counsel payroll? There is none. Donna, is there any correspondence and communications?
I have two invitations in front of me. One is for the graduation for the adult education, which will occur Thursday, June... Oh, sorry. I have two announcements on graduations. The adult ed graduation will be Thursday, June 13, at 7:00 PM in Enrico Fermi High Auditorium, and that's on North Maple Street. And the second is an announcement from the World Language Department would like to extend an invitation to attend the 11th Annual World Language Awards Program on Wednesday, June 5, at 6:45 in the Enfield High School Auditorium.
Very good. Thank you. Moving on to item 17, we have need to go into a second executive session, this one for matters related to collective bargaining and matters related to the superintendent's evaluation. Does I have a motion?
It's moved.
Moved by Tom.
Seconded.
Seconded by Donna. By a show of hands, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Any abstentions? You opposed? Okay, and we're moving down to, where are we staying here?
So wherever you go.
Thank you, Kathy.
I know the Enfield, Enfield room is taken, I think, so.
No, you're gone.
You're gone? Okay. They're gone? Okay. So we can stay here, then?
We can stay here. It's more comfortable here.
It's warmer out there. Are your microphones still on? It was. I'm not saying. Yeah. I'm just, 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 I'm